Twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four City Council Meeting. We're going to begin with the invocation. And Councilman Haney is going to give us a guest and then followed by the pledge. You'll place stand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like Mark Donaldson to give the invocation this morning. Mark is the executive pastor, pastor of core worship at Marvin Methodist Church. And not only that, he's a good friend of mine, so I appreciate you being here today, Mark.
Amen. Stuart, thanks for having me. Thank all of you for your service and thank you all for your care for our city. Psalm one eighteen twenty-four, "This is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it." Will you pray with me? Lord, we are thankful for this day and all that it brings with it. Grateful for these who serve, for those who are being recognized at work in our city's government and in our city's politic. And I pray that you would bless them for their years of service. Bless those who are just beginning. I pray that there would be a mutual understanding and learning from one another. God, I'm thankful for all that's on the agenda, from zoning to contract awards. And for those who are here to express concern or ask question, I pray, Lord, that words would be seasoned with grace. God, I thank you that we are a part of something bigger than ourselves and we are thankful for this city that we live in and the opportunity to steward over all that goes into making it a great place. And I pray that that would be true of this meeting and true of the way we live and give ourselves to it and to each other. So come, Lord, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to begin with the minutes from August the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Winn, second by Curtis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to come down for some awards. All right, we've got four awards today. Yeah, I've got something that's weird today. They didn't list all the names and they did their, they like the same way. They show how great yours. They also said like, I think they added anything else, fact, Allen, so I spelled Allen right. And it's the same with Tate, A-Y-T. So they took off, they're having me out there. So the first award, the first award goes to Cassandra Royer, San Park, twenty-five years of service. Next, we have Jordan Goshart, firefighter, twenty-five years of service. Next, we have Greg Erin Allen, firefighter, twenty-five years of service. And lastly, we have Pete Tate, firefighter, twenty-five years.
Before we go back to the ground, simply just say it is an honor to acknowledge these folks that have worked for the city for so long. It seems like we do this frequently. And that's a lot. These folks have stuck around longer for many years and they've been revolving and help you take around a lot longer. Don't retire or go over somebody's head.
All right. Z-one.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning, Council.
Oh, wow. Small joke.
All right. Again, good morning. The first item we have is a, well, the first three items are primarily for the same property, but they are three different requests. The first one is a request for an amendment to the consent plan for the Bellwood development, which is on the West Loop, West Loop and Earl Campbell, that area. And this area is generally a mixture of commercial, some residential in that area, and then just the open space to the west, Bellwood Lake. It's a large piece of land, still being planned for development, but they are closer to developing this property than they have been in the past. So this is why they are coming back with an amendment to their concept plan, which guides the, or sets the parameters for the entire development. I'll go back a second here. So as you see here, it is zoned from PCD, which is Platte Commercial District. It was zoned that way in two thousand eight. And when it was zoned, it was, this concept plan was adopted, which is, it's not a site plan, it's a general plan for the area that shows where certain types of uses will go, different densities for residential development, and then the general layout of the major streets. As you see there, Earl Campbell Parkway goes through the property there. And so this is what was adopted in two thousand eight. It's a different time back then, you know, they are closer to developing the property now, and so they have looked further at the feasibility of developing the property largely. So this is the proposed concept plan. Again, it's not, it's not the final site plan showing exactly how it's going to be laid out, but it does, there are any future site plans that come through or any future plats, subdivision plats, will have to be generally conforming to this, this layout. The one major thing to note is the, they do show a realignment or a slight alteration of Earl Campbell Parkway going through the property. They are required by ordinance to plan for that street as it's on the, it's on the city's adopted master street plan. So they do have to provide for its continuation from, from one part of the property through to the other part as it goes out to Chandler Highway. So the, primarily the shift in alignment is so that it reduces how much of the flood plain gets crossed there and it reduces the expenses associated with that. They do show connections on some minor streets throughout the area. They also show Robertson Road to the, to the east where it's going to continue, continue into this development from, from the east. The proposed densities are generally consistent with what was adopted in two thousand eight and does not exceed the maximum number of residential units that were approved back then, and it may actually reduce that. As you see on the east side, that is the primarily commercial area, and they have started planning for, you know, more in-depth planning for that, that portion of the development. The, this request was notified to neighbors within two hundred feet, the property owners within two hundred feet. We did not receive any letters in favor or in opposition, and the planning commission recommended approval of this request.
So Kyle, are you explaining Z-one, Z-two, and Z-three?
I can, yeah.
Was that, did that just encompass all three of them? Are you going to have a presentation?
I'll go through, I'll go through two and three as well.
Go ahead.
But we'll need three separate votes.
Okay.
Okay. So Z-two is from the same property, but it's instead of amending the, the concept plan is an amendment to the, to the text for the approved narrative for the site. When it was approved, there were restrictions on certain, certain uses that were prohibited within the development. We have seen this in the past year or two. Did come up for automated car wash. When it was approved in two thousand eight, there was, you know, concern with allowing car washes within this development. There was a refinement to that, to allow that along the loop frontage, which seems appropriate. This is a similar request where they are asking to change the prohibition on auto repair or auto service center for the, for the PCD, but again, limit that or allow that only along the loop, loop frontage, which again, also seems appropriate. They are planning, it's just one portion of the property, but it would apply to the entire frontage of the loop, but allow for the auto, auto service use, but it would be for the loop frontage and then interior or no exterior display of merchandise. This request was also notified to potentially impacted neighbors, and there was no opposition to this request as well. The planning commission also recommended approval of this change, again, just allowing that, that specific use along Loop three twenty-three, making that an exception. And then finally, this last, this last request is a little bit more specific to the development along the, along the loop. It is a site plan for the proposed auto service use, which is a breaks plus establishment. And it is on the north side of, the northern end of this, this frontage on the loop. And it's just kind of a typical layout for, for their development. They, they do incorporate all the required standards that are, they're specific to the, to the development, development within this, this plan. And they also show shared access off the loop and into the, you know, throughout the development, they will have to share access and they are showing that. So this request was also notified to neighbors and without any opposition returned to staff, and the planning commission also recommended approval of this request.
All right. Any questions for Kyle on Z-one, Z-two, or Z-three?
I have a question on the alcohol. When I was going through the packet at the top, it said no alcohol. Does that mean like liquor stores, not necessarily in like a restaurant or something like that or a lounge? Is that allowed? Alcohol?
In the, for him and the use, use table?
In the area, in the areas where they're going to have the lots and the businesses.
Right.
I think I read at the top of the packet, no alcohol. And I was just wanting a clarification, is that mean like a liquor store?
Liquor stores aren't approved. And Tyler aren't approved as of yet, but beer, beer and wine is sold next door at Sam's, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of it.
So it might have been, was it, so for the permitted uses for the expressly prohibited uses, the alcoholic, narcotic, and psychiatric care is referenced in there, which would be more of a clinic type of place, facility. I don't know of anything else. Restaurants and other places that sell alcohol is permitted for current law or allowed on, in this area. That'd be the only thing I could think of, that would be the part.
No, I'm not aware of any, like you said, any restriction on serving alcohol. It's just that clinic use is prohibited.
Kyle, there's a couple other property owners that are not part of the Providence group that were concerned about access back to Earl Campbell Road. And those groups have met with Providence and understand that they will be given an easement from their property to Earl Campbell.
That's my understanding as well. But even in the concept plan, they do show that they're not going to limit that access, so that is some, some insurance there.
All right, any other questions for Kyle? I will entertain a motion on Z-one.
You want to answer Z-one?
Second. Got a motion by Hawkins, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I entertain a motion for Z-two.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Hawkins, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I entertain a motion on Z-three.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Hawkins, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Z-four.
All right. And this is a zone change request from Agricultural District to R-one-A Single Family Residential District. The applicant is requesting this change to develop single-family homes. Those are also currently allowed within the current zoning. But the Ag District has a minimum lot size of one acre. And the applicant is here, I believe they plan to have lots at least half an acre in size for, you know, so smaller lots, more lots, but still at least nine thousand square feet, which is what R-one-A would allow for. And so they, that's the purpose of the request is to essentially develop more homes back here, but still maintain at least half a, half an acre in size. As you see, the surrounding properties are generally zoned Ag and they are developed with single-family homes on larger lots. There is R-one-A to the south, southeast, also for single-family homes. To the east, that is also the applicant's property. They plan to develop that with a mixture of, of uses. That's a large piece of land there. And the zoning map's not updated here, but that is a variety. I believe it's also R-one-A to the east, so that, this would match that compatibility. The Future Land Use Guide identifies this as low density, single-family. This one amended to match what's to the east, which is single-family, medium-low density. With the plan for the lots, it's still be half an acre in size at a minimum. That is still rather low, low density. It is generally compatible with that, with the area. As you see, the streets are currently built back here, but the, there's no, no homes, to my understanding, on any of these lots. Of the notices that we received, we sent out, we did receive one notice in opposition from the owner there, they own two properties, with a protest calculation of just over twelve and a half percent. The opposition or the concern was generally just about, a question about the ownership of the creeks or the lots in the east, which are in the creek. There might be a misunderstanding on exactly where the, their properties are. They did not indicate any concern about the actual zone change or the proposed density or anything like that. It was just a, they were concerned about the, how the map is shown here. But, but they, that is opposition that was returned on this request, so there is a protest calculation. The planning, planning commission reviewed this request and recommended approval of the zone change from AG to R-one-A.
All right. Any questions for Kyle? All right, I've got three cards here and I'm just going to call them up in order that they're on here. Jimmy Niedham. Cassandra, can we do, we're going to split the difference. Let's do it in four minutes.
Thank you very much.
If you can just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jimmy Niedham. I live at thirteen oh eight Cumberland Road in Tyler. First of all, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. As I mentioned, I live at thirteen oh eight Cumberland Road. I live there with my wife, Michelle. We've lived there for thirty years. That's where we raised our kids and they come back from time to time, as you might imagine. The, I have, and my property is at the, or our property is at the corner of Cumberland Road and Wilder Trail. On the map, it's just east to Wilder Trail. We live on seven acres. And most of the property in that area is five, six, four, seven acres. It's not what the, what Genicov wants to reduce the lots to. I have talked with Mr. Brewer and I've talked to Dennis Darrow and their group on what they want to do with this property, which is highlighted in green that they bought from Harold Wilder. Just a little history, they purchased it from Mr. Wilder in June of twenty-fourth, just a few months back. And I've talked to them about what their intentions are to do with this property, and I don't have a problem, and I said that to them, I don't have a problem with the rezoning from Ag to R-one-A, all right? What I, I felt I'd be remiss if I didn't appear here today and explain to you what their other intention is. What I do have a problem with is the Genicov group constructing a road just to the north of my property that connects to Wilder Trail. The road they would construct would be probably in that first east lot that's on the screen. And what their intention is, is to connect that road that would be connected to Wilder Trail in subdivision unit number four to their three hundred and thirty acres to the east that fronts Paluxi and Cumberland Road. And, and I've advised them of that. I have a problem with the construction of the road, not to rezone from Ag to R-one-A. The reason I have a problem with the construction of the road, among other reasons, is number one, it would inundate Wilder Trail with traffic from the three hundred and thirty acres that they own. But the main reason I have a problem with the construction of the road is that Mr. Wilder and I were involved in some protracted litigation, lasted about eight or nine years, and I won't belabor you with the details of that, other than to say, arising out of that litigation, Mr. Wilder entered into a settlement agreement with me and my wife specifically agreeing that he would never construct a road in subdivision unit number four and connect it to Wilder Trail for obvious reasons. Now, I understand that that's not before you today, and it is not a road, it's not before you today, the platting of the road, the construction of the road is not before you today. But I felt I would be remiss if I did not bring that up to you today and just let you know about that written agreement that we have. I want to thank you very much for your time. Thank you for allowing me to be heard here today.
Thank you, Mr. Niedham. All right. Next up, we have Jim Van Devender. If you state your name and address for the record.
Jim Van Devender, eight twenty-eighth Colonial Drive, Tyler, Texas, seven five seven oh one.
You can put him on a timer too, only to be fair.
You want me?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Thank you all for letting me speak. I'll try to keep my comments brief. I certainly understand, I do want to address Mr. Niedham's comments. I understand that City Council is not a court of law, okay? But all of y'all have bought real property in some way, shape, or form, and usually, whether it's a house, whether it's a commercial building, whether it's a potential development, you get a title insurance commitment, which delineates on Schedule B, all the items that affect that property. That could be restrictions, that could be easements, that could be mineral reservations. And the reason that those are there is they were filed for record to affect that property. The issue in this case, of course, I represent Genicov West Mud Creek. I also represent Genicov West Mud Creek on this particular development. And when you represent somebody in a potential development, you pick that thing apart because you're going to build something on it. You don't want to build on top of a gas pipeline. So you do everything you can to make sure, you know, it's fit to be built on. This settlement agreement was never filed of record. When they had their lawsuit, they did not file a list pendance, they didn't file a memorandum of the settlement agreement, they did not file the settlement agreement itself. The, that is known as constructive notice when it's filed for record. The other notice is actual notice when somebody just tells you something. And nobody said anything to Genicov about this settlement agreement. The first thing they found out about the settlement agreement was about two weeks ago from Mr. Niedham, which they had already bought the property and paid good money for. Therefore, it's my opinion, they are not bound by this settlement agreement. Okay, whether you want to go with Mr. Niedham on this or whether you want to side with me, as he mentioned, it's really totally irrelevant. I mean, we're here to discuss a zoning issue. Wilder Way, unit four, was platted, I think in two thousand three, ten lots with Wilder Trail going right up through the middle. That's the exact same subdivision we have right now. There's, the, Genicov is not asking for approval of a new road. Obviously, if you're going to do a new road, you've got to have engineering, you've got to have studies, you've got to make sure it's going to work for the situation, and that's, that's for another day. So I believe that this zoning measure should be passed, and if there's going to be a discussion about a possible road, then that's for another day. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be delighted to answer them.
Any questions? All right.
All right, thank y'all very much.
All right. Next, we have Trey Brewer. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name's Trey Brewer, thirteen fifty Dominion Plaza. Thank you guys for, for hearing this out today. Like you've heard, we're, our intention is to rezone Wilder Trail to R-one-A. We're, our intention is to, to build larger lots, similar to what, what you see in Holly Tree and Legacy Bend. We'll have restrictions on it, restricting homes to greater than three thousand square feet, similar, similar restrictions that we have in Legacy Bend. We want to do a nice, first-class job. So that's, that's our intentions. We're happy, glad to be part of Tyler, Tyler's growing, and we're happy to be part of that growth, so that's all I've got.
Any questions, Mr. Brewer?
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's been well said by all four gentlemen, or three, that we are not a court of law, and we are here on a zoning item. And the, a settlement agreement or road is a discussion for another day with another group of people evidently. So if we can just kind of stick to the agenda item, which is a zoning item, I'll entertain discussion or motion.
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Niedham being here and understand his concern, but I agree with you that all we're really talking about today is a zoning change. So with that, I've moved to approve Z-four.
Second. Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for being here. All right, we're going to move to O-one. Kedry.
Okay, Mayor, you have item O-one before you. This is a request.
This is a request that City Council consider adoption of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 23, 24 budget, our current budget. This is normally done in our budget adoption process, but we were wrapping up a few items, so that's why we're bringing this to you as a, as a separate agenda item. But simply what this ordinance is doing, we're amending our general fund, our excess fund balance, we're moving that over to the General Capital Projects Fund to fund projects for, for next year, for FY '25. Also, we needed to infuse a little bit of cash into the transit fund, so we're requesting to do that as well. And then our vehicle services fund, we've got some vehicles that are carried over from 2023 that we didn't get delivery until 2024, so we need to amend the budget for that. Then also, some services on our TIF-TERS fund, we need to amend the budget for that as well. And then our parks improvement fund, to reflect the grant that we received from Tax Dodge for upgrades at Lindsay Park. And then finally, there's various airport grants, runways, ramps, things like that. So it is recommended that City Council consider adopting an ordinance amending the fiscal year 23, 24 budget for various grants that were awarded during fiscal year, purchases of vehicles and other services that were not completed prior to fiscal year, and to transfer operational savings to fund capital projects. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Kedry?
Moved to approve.
Got a motion by Nichols, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. M1. M1. Do, do, do. Heather?
I'm ready, Kedry, Kyle?
Yeah, put the peanut butter on the table.
Kedry didn't bring peanut butter up here. Thank you, sir. Only one? You can be seated. Go ahead.
Alright, this, this next request is a request that City Council consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement with North Chase Development to reimburse costs associated with East Maple Estates Unit One. This is a consideration of essentially a, a development agreement with this developer for East Maple Estates. This is a property located at the intersection of the North Loop and North Broadway. That's about 90 acres in size, is located within our tax reinvestment zone, number three, or TERS three. And so the North, North Chase Development, North Chase Development LLC plans to develop this 90-acre tract. The proposed development includes a mixture of land uses, including shopping plaza, strip retail plaza, small office buildings, mixed-use buildings, and then also single-family homes and multifamily housing within this development. The, the property was rezoned a number of years ago, or a couple of years ago, to what you see here, again, with commercial on the corner, the hard corner, and then a mixture of uses, multifamily, and the rest being single-family. 224 dwelling units are shown, or single-family lots are shown here on the preliminary plat that has been approved. The op can, is requesting the development agreement to use fund reimbursement from the TERS fund, not to exceed $9,000, $900,000 for this Unit One phase. They are proposing the construction of these two streets here, Maple East Drive and Melon Tree Drive. And, and so this agreement would allow them to be reimbursed by the, the TERS fund, recommended for $900,000 to build this infrastructure. Again, this will help incentivize growth within this area and provide new development for, for this part of town, which is consistent with the Tyler Forest Comprehensive Plan, which, this will add many new rooftops to the north end, which is consistent with that goal of 3,000. And then also, it is a, essentially a mixture of uses at, at a key intersection within the city, and it will complement the, the plan, or implement the plan in that regard as well. The, so with that, with that being said, the request is that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with North Chase Development LLC to reimburse costs not to exceed $900,000 associated with East Maple Estates Unit One infrastructure improvements.
Alright, we do have two cards on this, Ray Boudreau and Ed Thompson. Do y'all have any question for these two gentlemen? Any question for Kyle?
I don't, I don't have a question, but I just, I see Mr. Thompson in the audience, so I want to say to him that I appreciate you continuing to work in District Three and bringing more growth to that particular area. Thank you. With that being said, if there's nothing else, I'll offer a motion that we approve in, in one.
Second. Got a motion by McKeller, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, are we pulling M2, or are we listening to M2?
No, we're pulling M2.
Okay, pulling M2. Alright, going to M3.
Kate can still give you some peanut butter, though.
Actually, on, on my sheet, it says Nikki was gonna do that presentation. Did you bring peanut butter?
It was all her, it was her peanut butter. Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. Agenda item M3 is for the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant Taste and Odor Study, Phase Two. So the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant is a 30 million gallon per day conventional treatment plant that gets its source water from Lake Palestine. Like, the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant is responsible for over half of the city's drinking water supply. Lake Palestine is prone to seasonal algal blooms, causing an increase in taste and odor producing compounds such as Giostman and MIB. At the plant, the current treatment technologies do not allow us to consistently decrease these concentrations to below the TNO threshold, which is very low, at about eight nanograms per liter. The purpose of this project overall is to identify recommendations for enhancing taste and odor compound removal while enumerating potential improvements to enhance process performance and finished water quality. Phase One is already complete and is included in tasks 1 through 300, and that resulted in a testing plan that has been developed by HDR. So Phase Two, which is what is before you today, is tasks 400 through 700, and that includes bench and pilot scale testing of various treatment technologies for taste and odor removal. Bench scale testing is in the laboratory, and pilot scale testing is kind of a smaller scale that's done at the plant. So at the completion of the pilot testing, we'll have a process study report, and that process study report aims to document the study results with development of a schematic level concept for the proposed improvements, implementation, and a feasibility summary. So the plan is to start piloting January 2025. So we'll start that, and that process will take about a year. There will be a number of different objectives we will accomplish during this pilot, pilot project, and after that, a process study report will be developed. And it's, it's expected that that process study report will be completed and finalized by April of 2026. So this will enable us to have a plan for the improvements to the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant moving forward. So it is recommended that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services contract in the amount of $1,750,000 with HDR for the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant Taste and Odor Study Phase Two project, and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimbursed expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Alright, I will say I'm very excited about this project. So any questions for Kate?
I've got one. What's the, can you explain what the pilot process is?
Right, so we'll kind of be doing it in two phases. So they'll be doing the bench scale, which is in the laboratory, where they'll be running jar testing and different things they can do in a laboratory scale to examine our, our particular water and see what kind of treatment technologies might work. Then we will move into the bench scale, or the pilot scale, which will actually be like little filter columns that are set up at the plant. We'll use our settled water, running it through these filter columns, using a number of different, like granular activated carbon, biologically activated filters, and other technologies like that. And so what it'll do is, it will, it won't just be theoretical, right? We will have a really good idea of moving forward, what will work, because we do have a very unique water in Lake Palestine, so it's important we actually get that piloted before we determine what it is we need to do.
So, so what they'll be doing is, is, is kind of fine-tuning the process for that water. This isn't, the whole process isn't experimental to say, can it be done? It's just, what is it gonna take to work here?
Right, right, and so the, and in the, there will be different objectives that we go through, and so we're trying to catch when we actually have this spike that we see in Giostman about February or so. So we'll catch that actual, like, ambient testing on our water, but then we're also gonna go and spike it to even higher than what we typically see to make sure that we can account for, because we've seen those Giostman numbers increasing over the years. Right.
Any other questions for Kate? Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Tiffany, you got two jars. You're making that for Nikki. Y'all noticed the theme going on here today, don't you? Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Tiffany Curry, Tyler Water Utilities. I am presenting item M4, which is an engineering services contract for the Consent Decree Group Seven remedial work. Pipeline Analysis completed their assessment of our Group Seven assets, and the subsequent remedial measures plan was submitted to EPA in July of this year. Based on that remedial measures plan, we've put together an engineering services scope of work that I will be presenting today with Langin Engineering. We anticipate that this work will be completed in 2026. The engineering services scope of work includes design of approximately 104,000 linear feet of gravity-made remediation, as well as just 11 manholes and cleanouts, so a very small manhole package this time. We anticipate two construction packages, a traditional one that has, you know, internal point repairs, open cut, manhole replacement, and then a specialty package that would have manhole coating, pipe bursting, CIPP. The anticipated cost is $5,575,000 to complete the construction, and the engineering fee is $903,000. I request that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to execute the engineering services agreement with Langin Engineering for the Group Seven Consent Decree Remedial Measures Design in the amount of $903,000.
Alright, any questions for Tiffany? Move to approve in four.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, M5. Can you please take it out of the sack?
Good morning, Mayor. Okay, today I'm gonna be presenting our 2425 Property and Casualty Insurance Renewal. In, thank you, in 2022, the city issued an RFP for our insurance, our property and casualty insurance, and after analysis, we selected our packaged property and general liability policy through McGriff, Siebels, and Williams, our cyber through Hallmark, Hibs Hallmark and Company, our special event through Bosworth and Associates, and our special event liability, or, I'm sorry, our TPA through Innovative Risk Management. This process allows for two one-year renewal options with the current vendor, as long as premiums are acceptable, and this is the second of those two options. These are the coverages that are in our program. The big ones are our property, our law enforcement liability, our umbrella, auto liability, cyber. We have our pollution policy, wastewater pollution policy in this program as well. So premiums are based on our exposures, and as you can see, our exposures primarily stayed flat, except for our building and personal property numbers. They actually went up 14.4%, and that primarily had to do with some increases in values for Tyler Water Utilities. Some of the pump station values were increased, so our exposure actually went up 14.4%. These are our premiums, and you can see I've got the expiring premium, the 23, 24 premium compared to the renewal premiums. And the one that's really driving the premium increase is our property policy, so that one is a 32% increase, but of course, we also had the 14.4% increase in our values. So the other ones, there are some increases there, but the premium is lower, so it didn't drive the overall premium up as much. So the overall rate increase on, on the property and casualty program is 19.3%. And then the other change in the policy is to increase the auto liability deductible from 50,000 to 100,000 per claim. So we did look at the claims that are in that layer between 50 and 100,000, and over the past five years, we've seen seven claims in that layer. Four of them were in 2019, so we, we have been having some better claim experience since 2019, and there's, the, the average of those claims over that period is about 37,000 per year. So the factors that are driving the premium increase and the changes in our deductibles are obviously the recent natural disasters. We've seen them here in Tyler. Significant hardening in the local government insurance markets, there's just not that many insurance companies that want to work in that space, so that creates, you know, less competition and higher rates, unfortunately. And then just inflation, there's an increased cost to repair and replace damages and a significant increase in medical costs. So McGriff advises that the renewal rate and the terms that we are offered are highly competitive and recommends renewal. And then the good news on the cyber side is we are seeing a premium decrease of 9.7%, and that has a lot to do with what Benny and his group are doing in security. And Hibs Hallmark does advise the renewal rate is competitive, and, and we should lock that in. And then the special events liability, there's no premium increase, and our third-party claim administration is a 7.8% increase. So this is, this shows the expiring premium and the renewal premium, so it's just an overall decrease of 2.2% on these lines of coverage. Any questions?
Any questions for Sarah?
I think all of us that are, have had any insurance renewed recently have seen that increase, so, I mean, 19.3 is a lot, but it's not as much as others I've heard of, so.
Right.
Good work, Sarah.
Is that a motion?
Move to approve in five.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. M6.
Okay, M6 is the renewal of the excess workers' comp insurance. Same process in 2022, we issued the RFP. We selected Midwest Employers Casualty through Hibs Hallmark and third-party claim administration with Claims Administrative Services, and again, this is our second renewal option. This chart shows the breakdown of our exposure base, which is payroll on the workers' comp policy, and you can see it didn't change. policy, and you can see it didn't change significantly. The retention is going to remain the same, same as our deductible, and the premium is going to, it increases four point two percent. The third-party claim administration is increasing seven point eight percent, so the total percentage increase is five point two percent. HIBS Hallmark advises that this renewal rate and terms are competitive relative to the Texas insurance market for local governments and recommends approval.
Any questions for Sarah?
Move to approve in six.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Sarah. All right, we're down to the consent agenda.
Mayor, if you don't mind, some of the staff have something that they need to get off their, get out of their way for consent.
KLTV, will you zoom in on this? For the benefit of Mayor Ishihara in Longview, if you're watching.
I have twelve containers in the car.
Have to get a bigger table. Leroy's still pulling it out.
Now, that's what I'm talking about. KLV TV, did you zoom in on that? Can you make sure that Mayor Ishihara sees this video?
Oh, I'll send it to her personally.
Okay, thank you. All right, now to the consent agenda. Do we want our previous presented?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City manager, report.
Mayor, um, I also. A few items of note. As y'all approved the budget at your last council meeting, one of the items was contingent upon whether or not we received a federal grant, and so I'm proud to announce that on the two police officers that we put forward for the federal cops grant, that we have been awarded on that grant. This will provide federal funding for three years to cover the costs of two police officers assigned to work in the downtown district. We should receive the formal notification very shortly. We'll start the process of moving forward the strategy of developing the Community Resource Officers Crisis Intervention Team unit that will, and so this will include placing this unit under the supervision of a sergeant with experience in crisis intervention and community outreach. One of the projects, as you kind of see happening around the city, has been on our traffic signal indication replacement of retro reflective back, black, yeah, backplates. The city received a call from a citizen complimenting us on the new retro reflective backplates that were being installed. They want to say that was, they want to give the city kudos that the new yellow borders make, around the traffic lights, make so much easier to see, and I appreciate your hard work, and I'm sure you get lots of complaints. I wanted to pass on the praise. This project will touch just over a hundred of our traffic signals. City staff and traffic operations and engineering have been working closely with TaxDOT, who is overseeing this project, to provide oversight and feedback on the installations being completed by the contractor. As of today, forty-eight intersections have been completed, which represents forty-six percent of the work. The main goal of this project is to enhance the safety of our traffic signals in the city of Tyler. A couple of events that we've had recently are the, we had our third annual Tyler Art Festival, and so this was hosted by the Main Street Department on Saturday, September fourteenth, in downtown Tyler Square, in partnership with Tyler Art Lift, a local nonprofit that promotes art education and supports the cultivation of art in Tyler. We hosted five incredible local musicians, over seventy local artist vendors, and hundreds of festival attendees. Among the activities were a public art and art gallery scavenger hunt, interactive craft booths, face painting, and community canvases that developed throughout the event. The event was designed for local artists to gain exposure, sell their creations, network with other artists and art organizations, engage with the public. It was a full day of celebrating our local art community, encouraging the public to take part in creating beautiful things. And then finally, last Saturday, September twenty-first, we had an incredible turnout of over two hundred participants, including volunteers, Keep Tyler Beautiful board members, and park staff, who came together at Fun Forest Park and the Tyler Senior Center for a day of beautification projects. Volunteers engaged in a fun paint-by-number mural on the park restroom, adding vibrant art to the space. Additionally, we restored the flowerbed in front of the senior center, creating a beautiful welcome to complement the center's freshly painted interior. A new retaining wall by the new soccer field was also partially completed by volunteers, and will be fully completed in the coming week. A special thank you to the mayor and our council members who joined us, as well as our generous sponsors and donors. We are also deeply grateful to the Keep Tyler Beautiful board members and park staff for their support, and a huge shout-out to our amazing volunteers. Their hard work made this Park Service Day a resounding success.
So you're not going to speak about the peanut butter challenge?
Mayor, I turn that over to you, sir, if you wish to just kind of brief people why peanut butter is such an important thing for the city of Tyler today.
All right, Cassandra, you'll put me on a timer? Now, you know, first of all, thank you for everyone that brought peanut butter today. It really is touching. I sent my pastor a text last night that says, "I've been asking so many of my friends to get peanut butter and asking for money, that I'm not sure if I'm going to have any friends left," and I asked my pastor, "Will you still be my friend?" So, you know, I have been bugging a lot of people about this contest, and it's, the mayor in Longview, she's great, but really, it's a challenge, and it's a good challenge. And sometimes in the past, the city of Tyler and the city of Longview have kind of butted heads, and we've kind of been on our own, and we never really have hugged one another. And so I will say that this competition has been good for that, and I've had more conversations with the mayor of Longview over the last month than I've had with the mayor of Longview for the last ten years, not to blast the previous mayor. But it's been a, it's been a good competition, and, you know, as I said yesterday, to the Longview newspaper, you know, there's really not a winner or a loser. The winner is the East Texas Food Bank. So tomorrow morning, they're going to give the totals for Longview-Tyler and where we stand, and then the hard cutoff is at noon on Friday. So if you do want to donate, you can bring it here, or you can take it to your Brookshire's Fresh or Super One store, or you can get online at the Food Bank, you scroll down, and you can donate, there's different categories that you can donate, ten, fifteen, twenty, five thousand, whatever. So I just thank you for everybody's support, and we will find out the final number on Monday, and a trophy will be presented to the winner, and it will be bragging rights prioritized. So.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't see any of this council put any peanut butter up there, but I do have twelve bottles for you in my car.
And I feel like a twenty-five-dollar donation online, so you.
As long as they did, see.
I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure when it's said and done, we will have full council participation. So that being said, thank you all, and I'll turn the motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, if you don't mind, last time I was here, I mentioned the fact that there were four hundred and eighty top ladies that were here, and I wanted to give recognition to our director of Parks and Recreation, Leigh Anne, for the great work that she did. She came in, and two days, she made everything happen for us, so thank you, Leigh Anne. I'm so moved.
All right, we are adjourned.